Welcome to the next board meeting is Monday, August 14th, 2020, please six o'clock. Mr. Andre.
Here.
Mr. Gayhar.
Here.
Mr. Gatten.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Mrs. Reckles.
Here.
Mr. Scarell.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Tonight's meeting was known as per state statutes, we have minimal participation. I've read the statement, you may.
Is this recording?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Hi, my name is Melissa Bolender. Thank you for addressing the gender support plan document at the last school board meeting. I noticed that it's going to be discussed again tonight, but this time in a closed session. I understand that there are statutes dictating times when a closed session is required, but this should not be wanted. This discussion on the administrative guidance document is not about any specific students, but about a specific document. This affects every student in the district, whether they are on a gender transition plan or not. Parents, grandparents, and community members alike deserve transparency on this issue. Individual students should not and do not need to be discussed in regards to this document, and this meeting should be open to the public to attend and to view, and it should be recorded. It is important for the community to understand how a resolution is met and a clear understanding of the law versus case law versus executive order. I have emails to the board that are left unanswered because Mr. Tadlock has stated that responding to me could be a walking quorum. As long as a board member does not reply all, there is no concern about a walking quorum. Board business is not supposed to be conducted outside of the regular school board meetings. That is why the board members cannot reply all and conduct business through emails to the entire board. Responding to a community member individually is not a walking quorum. Now we have a document that is being discussed from the school board, but in a closed session. If you're not answering in an email and it's not being discussed in open session, how are parents, grandparents, and taxpayers supposed to know what is going on? Would you please reconsider having what is scheduled to be in closed session open to the public in regards to the gender support plan document? There was a huge turnout at the last school board meeting when this document was discussed. Parents, grandparents, and community members want and deserve transparencies in the schools where their children attend. Mr. Tadlock mentioned at the last school board meeting that the district does not have secret documents, and that the only thing in a public school district that can be kept secret is confidential notes related to an investigation. That's it. Additionally, Mr. Tadlock mentioned at the last school board meeting that there are lots of support plans, protocols, and procedures that we don't link and post on our website. How are parents supposed to know what these are to even think to request? The lack of transparency is concerning. District policies are posted on the district's website. Mr. Tadlock has mentioned that policies can be cumbersome. Is this why plans, protocols, and procedures are developed instead of policies? Parents need to see what plans, protocols, and procedures are being implemented in the schools where their children attend.
One second.
If you're truly not trying to hide anything from parents, these need to be posted as well. As I brought to the board previously, parents have a right to see what their children are learning in the schools. Parents also should have access to the support plans, protocols, and procedures, as well as training for futures through the district. Thank you all for what you do. I know that you put a lot of time and effort, and we appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
Hello again. Going on vacation, I wouldn't want you to miss me too much, so I thought I would come tonight. Certainly, I did not mean any disrespect for anyone's military service. Last time, my dad was a Marine. He was brought up in a Marine family and was not meant to be disrespectful, but I do feel I was taken out of context, so I want to clarify the context. Okay? I had used the term minivan Taliban in regarding to the Moms for Liberty, and just an aside, I'm wondering why there are no dads for Liberty? Because I would think both parents would be very interested in it. So I wanted to clarify that a little bit and share some information. Those of you who know me know I'm a rabid researcher and read many, many different kinds of sources. The Moms for Liberty is an American conservative political organization that advocates against school curricula that mentions LGBT rights, race and ethnicity, critical race theory, which we all know is not taught in public schools, and discrimination. Multiple chapters have also campaigned to ban books that address gender and sexuality from school libraries. Prominent members of the Moms of Liberty have close ties to the Proud Boys, three presenters, QAnon, white Christian nationalists. So this is not a PTA gone wild. Proud Boy leader Enrique Tarrio once boasted that the Moms for Liberty is the, and I hope I don't offend anybody by this quote, the Gestapo with vaginas. Mr. Tarrio was found guilty of seditious conspiracy and sentenced to a maximum of 20 years in prison. I do think you are known by the company that you love. Moms for Liberty and its nationwide chapters endorse candidates for public office that align with the group's views. They also use their multiple social media platforms to target teachers and school officials and school boards, advocate for the abolition of the Department of Education, and spread hateful imagery and rhetoric against the LGBT community. Labeled an extremist anti-government group by the Southern Poverty Law Center in May, they are really seeking to undermine public education holistically and to divide communities. So I thought it was interesting that the word Taliban, meaning general, not that Taliban, but Taliban, comes from the Pashto word, which means student or seeker. So that I was surprised that that's where it started. It certainly has not ended there. So I just, as a person that has lived in this community for 26 years and has taught this community for 22 years, I would hope that we spend more time being united, working together, rather than dividing the communities. Thank you so much for your time.
Hello again. Good to be back on. Steve Perkins. I agree, Julia, with what you said earlier today. We do need to eliminate the amount of controversies. Five years ago, I never thought I'd be somebody emailing members. But five years ago, I never thought I'd be living in Elkhorn either. But here we are today. I'm emailing board members, and I'm living in Elkhorn. And I agree. There should be dads fighting for their kids. There should be more dads standing up. I don't think they should be far right. I don't think they should be far left. I think anybody that ends on anywhere on that end of the spectrum is where we have all this controversy coming from. Unfortunately, we're all stuck in the middle sometimes. And when we're stuck in the middle, sometimes we start questioning what's going on around us. And when we start diving in, sometimes things just start falling into our laps. And when you have the guts to stand up and start speaking, sometimes people come to you unconfident with what's going on. And every once in a while, I mentioned things falling in the laps. You know, just from being aware of what's going on on the policy committee side, on the agendas, it's not 533. I looked at what 533 was. Yeah, that's the part of the interview committee of parents and staff. And I disagree with letter of the law. I think that is 100% a breach of policy. And when you look at what the responsibilities of the district administrator is on 231, number one, administrative, implement board policies. Well, board policies aren't getting implemented. Does that mean that the three people that were at the board meeting and you and everyone else that spent the time to be online or be there in person completely wasted their time? The policy isn't being held up in schools? Does that mean that the policies that you brought up today don't mean anything? That any flags can be flying whenever they want? Or does that mean that if you're getting into the gender stuff, that anybody can go into any bathroom that they want? Because the policy there was written in 2012, so tomorrow, any boy can go into any girl's bathroom, and it will not be a breach of policy. Any girl can go into any boy's bathroom, and it will not be a breach of policy. What's the point of policy if it can just be breached and then rewritten five years later? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Landraska. I'm new to all of this. This highly controversial subject matter is what's really gotten me involved. Shame on me for not being more involved in the past, because maybe if I had like so many other parents, we would be in the situation that we are in. Bringing highly controversial subject matter to our little babies, our kindergarteners, first, second, third, and fifth graders. I'm here to follow up on the gender plan protocol Elkhorn School District has seemingly implemented. I have only three minutes to speak, and there's so much to cover. First off, I'd like to make one thing completely clear. In no way, shape, or form do I support disrespectful conduct, bullying, or discrimination against anyone for their individual choices, appearances, and private circumstances. I believe all people should be respected and walk in our public spaces safely, especially our schools. I have read through the Elkhorn Gender Support Packet that lays out information and protocols that our teachers are supposed to understand and follow. I have several issues regarding the whole subject. My first and main issue is that the board is chose to invoke a highly controversial ideology by implementing policies that further the agenda of one side. Our teachers, including elementary, are basically being taught gender theory, and in turn will be or are already implementing it in our schools. The use of the gender unicorn is meant for children to more easily accept and understand the theory. I was shocked to hear Mr. Tadlock say he didn't know the gender unicorn was controversial. Gender theory is highly controversial subject matter controversial all the way through the top officials in government and highly educated and experienced medical professionals. These arguments are happening as we speak. It confuses our youth. It sexualizes our youth. Introducing these ideas to elementary students is indoctrination. Our children should be encouraged to pursue the things that interest them and express themselves without shame. But telling them that their inner self may not match their outer self, and they can change what they are is a lie, and it is criminal. An adult who goes through these issues understands what they are doing. A child does not. Creating environments to normalize genderless society, like removing gender-based words and taking away gender-based spaces and gender-based sports, is a form of indoctrinating our youth. If our minor child, if a minor child of any age comes to any school staff and expresses signs of gender dysphoria, it is a medical issue, and the parents or guardians should be notified that same day, and the family will deal with their private matters accordingly, however they see fit, whether it's psychotherapy or affirming care. From there, upon the parent guardians' wishes, a plan can be set forth with the school, not the other way around. I am completely taken back by the notion that the school thinks they have any say in how and when these matters are to be dealt with. In the Elkhorn Protocol, it says ideally, parents should be involved, and that they do not need to be. It also reserves the right to a 10-day grace period before notifying the parents. Unacceptable. It further goes on to tell teachers that if the parent is not supportive of name changes and triggers an emotional response, staff is not to use the name change in front of the parent, indicating to me that when the parents are not around, they will comply with the wishes of the child over the parents. Furthermore, the protocol states three different times in three different spots to staff members that a child above 14 and above can petition the courts to change their legal name without parental consent. Tell me why this is pertinent information for staff members. The way this whole protocol reads gives me the notion that they think the parents' wishes and beliefs are last in line in these matters. Now, I've got more to say, but I don't have enough time, three minutes, to say. I will be dealing with this further, and I want you to know that our children are not the state's children, and we elect you as board members to put forth our wishes. And I have talked to neighbors and other parents. They have no idea what's going on here. This is not subject matter for five-year-olds, six-year-olds, seven-year-olds, eight-year-olds, all the way through. It shouldn't, this is for families to deal with and then privately deal with and find a plan forward, not the school.
I think some points of clarification are important to be made. The closed session today is due to the fact that it's in consultation with legal counsel. It does meet the closed session criteria and was reviewed with legal counsel prior to that. That doesn't mean that the board, when looking at and down the road, working on the gender support plan, would not do so in an open session and have that discussion in an open session. But by state statutes and bowel rights, the board has the right to meet with and should meet with legal counsel in a closed session regarding this matter. That's why the closed session is on. Doesn't mean that the development, modifications, or changes to the gender support plan wouldn't be done in open or would be recorded back out in open down the road. Furthermore, the gender support plan, as mentioned at the last board meeting and review, was based on the law, Title IX regulations, and statutes. That's something the board will be able to review with legal counsel in that meeting and then make some determinations if they, how they want to proceed with that, whether they want to modify the plan, and in doing so, maybe we'll be able to consult and handle that deal back. So, yeah, I think those important clarifications should be made.
Overnight travel requests from the Spanish department.
I'm Christine Lyra. I'm one of those Spanish teachers at the high school.
And I'm Danielle Villa, also a Spanish teacher at the high school. And so we've done this particular trip. This would be the fourth time. We were doing it every three years, and then COVID hits. We haven't done it in about five years. But it's gone really well. It's a great opportunity for kids because some of the other travel companies, you go, you stay in hotels, and you don't really use the language a lot. This program, kids actually take classes at an academy. They live with host families, so they speak the language and really live the culture a lot more. And the other advantage would be that it's, you know, direct with this academy, so that cuts out a lot of our expenses. So that's what I like most about the program, but it's in Salamanca, Spain, so we've in the past flown into Madrid, Chicago, direct flight to Madrid. We also can book our own flight through the travel, Elkhorn Travel. That cuts down on expenses too, but we fly into Madrid, then they pick us up and take us to the academy, which is about two hours west, like north, a little bit northwest of Madrid. And then I think I pretty much know that they do take a placement test before attending classes, so we offer it to kids one through AP, any age you can go, but they put them in the groups based on their level. So it's kind of nice to get individual attention in classes. So the host families are always carefully screened, and the kids have really enjoyed this part in the past. They do their laundry. They get three, another advantage would be the authentic home-cooked meals. They're not just eating at McDonald's or whatever. They get real authentic meals the whole time. And then the teachers have rooms. We can live with the family or live in what's kind of like a dorm would be the option, other option. And then the academy provides professional tour guides and the chaperones. We go on all the day trips around the city. And then last time, there was a trip to Portugal, because it's pretty close to the border, like an hour away, day trip. And then we also went up to southern Spain. We're thinking of keeping it a little bit closer this time. It's making it more simple, but it'll depend on what the kids want. We can kind of customize what they want. Estimated cost around $3,000. Hopefully, it'll be less than that. I'm still waiting on the airfare quotes, but the academy said about $1,200, and that was for a two-week stay, and we'll probably only do about 10 days, so it should be hopefully well under $3,000. And we can do fundraising like we've done in the past, too.
This is just information about the, kind of like the program and how much class, how many like classes they'll have, how many hours of class time, which is, what is it, like five a day, five hours? Four, four or five hours a day. I've only done this trip once. She said three times, but. So, yeah, so the classes are really, really, really nice. They're really helpful, and then the teachers also, and we get to take classes too, which is kind of fun. And they get a certificate and diploma, and they just really enjoyed it last time when we went. But yeah, and then I can talk about the, I think it's the next slide. Yeah, there's a lot of things to do in Salamanca. That was my first time going to Salamanca. I have been to Spain multiple times, but. And the kids love Salamanca, like a lot of them. The last time we went in 2018, they talked about, they're like, we don't want to go back, and we miss it, and they just love, they like love Salamanca. So there's a lot to do there. There's like cathedrals, the plazas. We did like a flamenco dancing class. We did a scavenger hunt. We did, what else did we do? The, yeah, the dance lesson salsa. We did flamenco, the chocolate with the churros, the tapas. Yeah, it was like super fun, and the kids just went on and on and on about it. If I see any of them that went on the trip like around, they're always like, Spain, I miss Spain. It was fun. We want to go back, and we want to live there, and they just loved it, so.
They've been asking.
They've been asking, yeah, like every year, every month, every trimester, kids are asking, why are we going back to Spain? So, but yeah. And then additional excursions, like she talked about, like a two-day trip to Madrid. Madrid's really cool, and the kids like to see that being the capital. The museums are fun. They love the stadium, the soccer stadium. And then the day trip to Segovia and Avila, and then, yeah, the one to Portugal, the day trip to Portugal. It's staying, we were talking about just staying closer, and I don't even know, like, I'm hoping I'm able to go, but I have 34 weeks pregnant, so hopefully everything works out, and I'm able to go with, otherwise we'll obviously find appropriate chaperones, but the goal is that I'm going to go with two. So, but yeah, we're going to try to keep it simple, not too much crazy travel this time around. But, but yeah, the kids have been asking us constantly to go back, so we're like, I think we should, we should try to.
That's just more information about the academy, what the city looks like.
How many students do you expect to go?
I think last time.
Last time, yeah, so last time I was about 17 or 18, typically about the size. And when I did Costa Rica, a few years back, that's the same group size. It's a really good size.
Yeah.
Not too big, not too small.
How many additional chaperones do you take other than the two of you?
Usually for every six students, one chaperone, I think, so the secondary.
At least one or two.
Yeah, Reese has come. Sarah Thade has helped a couple. Yeah, she's gone twice, too.
Yeah, and then Courtney at the middle school went last time. Yeah. I think it might be a bigger group just because we haven't gone in a while.
There's been a lot of interest, yeah, heads expressing interest, so we'll see, but.
Do you have any male chaperones that will go? Do you have male students?
We didn't in the past.
But we could. Not having the male.
Yeah, there's, there's male staff at the academy, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's true. You're not really, they're staying at home.
Right, yeah, yeah.
It's just the one night in Madrid on the way out.
Sure.
Just the hotel lights, yeah.
We need to approve it because it is an overnight.
I'm making motion to approve the overnight travel request. High school Spanish department is presented.
Is there a second? It's been moved to the second to approve the overnight travel request from the high school Spanish department as presented. All those, I say, aye?
Aye.
Pose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Voice vote again.
Come back and.
Yeah, we have to see a presentation when you.
We will. Yeah, thank you.
Four minutes. Regular closed session, passed out closed session, regular session attached to your agenda. Question?
I have some questions. Let me pull them up here. Badger Sporting Goods, what was that?
Oh, don't worry about it. I'm not a general.
I'm so sorry. Yeah, you're right. I'm walking ahead here. You're right. So, no, nothing on the minutes. Sorry. I move to approve the minutes July 24th, 2023, regular closed session, school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
My second.
So move to the second. It's here. Through the minutes of July 24th, 2023, regular and closed session, school board meeting is presented. Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhar.
Yes.
Mr. Gatten.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles.
Yes.
Mr. Scarell.
Yes.
General and Other Fund Bills, Mr. Trill.
The General and Other Fund Bills, receiving covers checks number 149809 through 149929, wire transfer 095 to 136, and ACH checks number 003220072 in the combined amount 800, or $684,781.44. And then there was a memo providing some additional information on the bills.
Well, you got my question already.
Yeah, we, Badger Sporting Goods, Badger Sporting Goods is a supplier mostly of athletic and fiat equipment and supplies, so for athletic teams and such.
Okay.
So on the flooring that we put in, what was the score footage that we covered?
Yeah. We ended up doing, I think, about seven or eight classrooms.
Okay.
So, and each classroom, gee, about 30 by 30, so that's about 900 square feet, I guess, per classroom. So, and we purchased the supply separately from the install, so it will save the sales tax.
Got it. So, so that was for both the supply and the install, or that's just?
That's just the supply.
The supply.
Yep.
Elite sportswear, John Anzalone.
Is that a credit card charge?
Yeah, I think John's online.
Yep. John, yeah, Elite Sportswear, couple charges, a couple of grand.
Yes, that was for the new youth cheer program, which is a community club and organization, so it was through 80, and that was for supplies for the youth cheer. The students had also, there was a registration fee with that as well.
Cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there questions?
I have a general question. So there were a bunch of, Jason, maybe this is for you, I don't know. There's a lot of avid charges, so. But there are a lot of different people are, I think, my question is, if I've seen it here that we pay for avid, and there's a lot of other charges associated with avid, do we get a, do we, do we like a total cost of what avid actually costs, rather than, we do itemize this avid expenses and avid program costs? Is that my answer, that right?
Yeah, I mean, there's avid fees in terms of avid itself and the registration and such, and then the travel, of course, would be a different vendor, and then maybe meal reimbursement or travel.
Yeah.
So.
Because they did a training in Minnesota.
Okay, and that's, that's just, that's part of that.
Professional development.
Yeah, that's professional development. I think that's what you're seeing now is those charges for their, the training.
Yeah. Okay. And then the transportation that listed under avid is part of that, is for the.
It would be part of.
And I think there was like enterprise rental vehicles, I think they do, so that was for avid.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so it fits under the professional development budget. There is a, avid has a fee, like project either way does to use their, like our other critical pieces for that, but then they have professional development components, so they code it to avid, because it was an avid conference that they went to.
Got it. Makes sense.
Another question?
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of August 14th, 2023, check numbers 149809 to 149929, wire number 095 to 136, and ACH number 0032 to 0072 in a combined amount of $684,781.44 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So move to the second to approve the general and other fund bills of August 14th, 2023, checks number 149809 to 149929, wire number 095 to 136, and ACH number 0032 to 0072 in the combined amount of $684,781.44 as presented. Go public, please. Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhar.
Yes.
Mr. Gatten.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles.
Yes.
Mr. Scarell.
Yes.
For discussion items, check the report.
That's me.
One second. I got a text message that people can't see. There, I need such a thin tighter screen. They couldn't see the presentations.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much. If, I haven't had the opportunity to come and say hello, so I've been at the position for almost a year, so I thought I would do that, thank you so much for having me. Everybody, uh, next slide, please, Jason. My name is Katie James, I am the community grant writer for Elkhorn area school district, as well as the city of Elkhorn and the Elkhorn Chamber of Commerce and Tourism, Cheryl. I accepted the position in the fall of twenty twenty two when it was created and really have enjoyed the last year of getting my hands dirty, figuring out all the fun projects that we can make possible in our community and also working alongside the city and being a partner between the school district and the city and the chamber. Uh, I am funded through Fund Eighty, which is the community service and program fund, and in order to bridge that gateway between those three entities. I have a seventh grader at the middle school, and I am someone who's going to be a freshman at the high school this fall. Uh, also, I'm part of the Rotary Club, I am the president of the library board of the Maxim Memorial Library, and I also help run their friends' non-propping. So I've had a lot of experience looking around for money in our community, and this has been a great opportunity for me to bring all of those things together into one place. Next slide, please, thank you. Uh, what I talked about a little bit is how these three entities work together, or strive to work together, I should say. The Elkhorn area school district has always striven to be a good community partner, but communication between the three entities, businesses, the school and the city, sometimes there's gaps there, uh, a big portion of my job is usually going from city hall and then coming here to the school district and saying, hey, I just heard this, what do you guys think? And, and vice versa, and that is a big part of my day, I've probably driven a marking into the road from back and forth here about to city hall all day long, and for the last eleven months, and it's been a really gratifying to see that just with a little more communication, the opportunity to talk through big plans and figure them out together makes things possible without necessarily needing big grant funds to do so. It's just, we got to talk. Next slide, please. This is one thing I really wanted to make sure that everyone understood, because it was something that I didn't necessarily understand right away, thank you, Mr. Truen. Uh, the difference between supplementing funding and supplanting funding. Private foundations are a whole different animal, but when it comes to public funding, federal and state funding, I am allowed to supplement programs, not supplant. Meaning, I wrote it down, Bill. Uh, my role is to find funding for new projects or ideas, that's supplementing, so you've got a great program in the Spanish department, I can supplement that if you have an idea to create something new. I cannot pay with public funding to keep the lights on, I can't pay for the teacher salary with that same grant, that would be supplanting the funds. So, uh, forbids the rebudgeting of grant funding to pay for existing projects or services that I can't do. And so when we were talking about the referendum and things like that, a lot of my friends came to me and said, hey, we need lights money. During COVID was a great exception to that rule because there was funding available to do those things, and there were resources out there in order to pay for operational expenses, that time has lasted. And so I go out and look for new projects. Okay. Uh, next slide, please, so this is twenty two, twenty three, or what it looked like for me. Uh, no one was in the role before, I just jumped in headfirst. Uh, the average grant writer submits thirty six grants in a year as a success rate of about, with public federal, about ten to thirteen percent. And then with private foundations, thirty to forty. I ended this term at about forty six percent. I asked for everything, as you can see, I thought I'm just going to go for all the money. Uh, seventeen million, seven hundred twenty five thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars was, uh, a big portion of that was for the Department of Energy, they had a grant this year called Renew America Schools where they were, um, you were able to apply to make infrastructure improvements to your buildings. We were not asked to actually apply after the interest letter, and that's really been the challenge that I've had. Figuring out where the city of Elkhorn fits in terms of funding for the community. Um, I've termed us the black hole, we aren't rich, but we aren't necessarily economically advantaged, we're diverse, but a lot of times we're not diverse enough. We have a lot of great programs, but it's not necessarily the programs that an entity wants to fund. Uh, on the city side, they have financial issues, but not enough financial issues, uh, we are sometimes urban, sometimes rural, sometimes we're metro urban, I can't even explain it. Sometimes we're in Milwaukee and sometimes we are in the middle of nowhere. And it's just in figuring out how we fit in terms of grants and demographics, that has been the joy of my last year and sometimes to my great frustration, I have a bald spot right here just from that. But all in all, lost twelve, still waiting on seven and won nine, the one program that's canceled was actually a ten week grant, thirty six pages, and then we found out right before they announced the winners that they were going to cancel it altogether, and then the breaks, next slide, please, so all in all, I won one million, six thousand, three hundred and seventy four dollars. The lion's share of that, as you know, is the Youth Build Grant, which was a beast to put together, and Kelly Demirath gets the bulk of the credit for that because she had applied previously, so we did have a roadmap to work with. Uh, we were one of only two public school districts to be awarded the grant, I have to tell you, I cried, so. It was a lot of work to put together and to be able to make that happen so that people in the program could continue was really rewarding. And that's really been a lot of what I've been doing, is hearing what teachers want to do, what the city wants to do, new fund plans and ideas, and try to help them make it a reality. Next slide.
I want to buy that's one of two districts in the entire country.
Yes.
Now, this is what I'm still waiting on, and four million, one hundred fifty two thousand, seven hundred and seventy five dollars. And actually, this afternoon, I was part of a speed round grant for the Department of Transportation, where it's first come, first served funding, I applied for three hundred twenty thousand for the city to help with a project with the water treatment plants, and it, you just never know what it's going to look like, what it's going to come down to or anything. A big portion of this, I actually asked Senator Baldwin for a direct funding, senate appropriation request. So we will keep our fingers crossed to see if we make, the city of Elkhorn makes it into the annual federal budget. Next slide, please. All right, this is my workload, uh, seventy percent of the grants were for the Elkhorn area school district, twenty six point seven percent were for the city and three for the chamber because we are putting in a new park in the vacant space next to the Chamber of Commerce in honor of Gary Wallam, you'll see it in the newspaper this week. Uh, this is what the grants look like, in terms of my workload, I don't see Bill or Jason very much, because if anything, I spend about seventy percent of my time working for the city, about twenty six percent of that time for the school district. Establishing relationships that have never been had with state and federal agencies, working on trying to get into city hall as much as I possibly can to make sure that they have all the tools that they need, because right now, like, the director of DPW was the one who was expected to be on that speed grant round today, and he does not have time to do that. So, um, as the big grants hit, because a lot of times I have a ten to twelve month waiting period where I'm dying to know if I've won or not, um, I think that number is going to shift. Thank you, Jason.
That's what I was going to ask, so when you're looking at this outstanding amount, which was seven million that you're waiting to hear back from?
Four.
Four, okay, what percent of that is city? Probably the bulk. So this percentage could swing quite a bit when that comes up.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, the next piece is how I support, and this was really trial and error, because there wasn't someone in the role previously. I am the model from, taken from the city of Wapaka in north central Wisconsin. Uh, I got to visit with Greg there before I started the job here, and as it turns out, our jobs ended up being pretty different. Uh, for the Elkhorn area school district, the staff here and the administration really understands grants, the process and how to get them done, the research and work needed to do that. Um, Jason let me apply for the Department of Energy Energy Class Prize, which we won earlier this year. But I am also going to serve as the team lead for that project and was asked by the Department of Energy if I could help present on how rural communities can help get more federal funding themselves, as I'm learning it, so that's, we have a presentation, uh, they just want to see someone flounder on stage, I swear. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce, I am in the capacity of advising and meeting with their chamber partners. So if a local business is interested in earning or learning about federal funding on their meatpacking plant or something like that, I can help them find those resources. Um, or if there is a nonprofit partner, I've met with a Sprague Theater, I've met with the food pantries, uh, just asking for general advice and also keeping my eyes open for anything that could apply for them. I'm not applying for those grants myself because of the time I have is limited, but just sending them ideas, just so they have an idea of what's out there is helpful. And then lastly, for the city, writing the grants with the department, developing the relationship with state and federal entities, advocate for equitable distribution of the resources, and then I miss you every month because I'm usually speaking at a city council meeting to talk about the efforts that they're doing there. Next slide, please. And this brings me to my last thing I wanted to mention, is that I, Brian knows, I really hate to be told no, and I really hate losing on grants, we work so hard in all of these areas to figure out a way to make projects happen and to make great ideas happen, and when I can't make that happen, it breaks my heart. And that's when I have decided to carve a different path, and I'd like to start with your blessing going to our larger community with the projects that I haven't already found funding for, I've vetted them, I've researched them, and I've tried to find public funding elsewhere or in foundations, and I just can't make it happen. I'd really like to put together a wish list in the coming months of, these are the projects for the city, for the school district, and for our community partners that they would really love to make happen, and what area person would love to pay for the air conditioning at the Sprague or buying bicycles for our children's program. Uh, we're going to be doing about a half a million dollar effort in the coming years to rehabilitate the van shelf in Sunset Park, and somebody's name could be at the top if they wanted, I'm open to anything, so we're, we're going to be leveraging a lot of those different relationships and opportunities in the next year, because if I haven't found funding for in the traditional grant writer sense, I really want to go after it in another way. Next slide, please. And that's all my information, I'm just down the street at the Chamber of Commerce, which is great, because there's a lot of meeting space, I can meet with different entities. I have both a school district and a city email address, because I just need to keep my world separate, and business cards for both, so please let me know if you have a question, if anyone in the community has an interest or has something that they've seen. I have vetted a lot of information or dug through resources for any community partner or any person that says, hey, I heard there was EV charging grants out there, what's that all about and is the city eligible, and just deep diving to figure out what we can get, because more money for one of us is more money for all of us. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Show me the money.
All right, we have two policies that are up for the first reading that are forwarded from the policy committee. First one is the anti racism policy, um, with the striking, the recommendation for the committee was just to strike the definitions, didn't see those as necessary or prudent to the actual policy on itself, and any policy committee members feel free to chime in anytime, and you'll see a number of a few minor, um, semantic changes or some verb change in the policy as it relates to um the language here, striking systematic, adding may cause or contribute to inequality. So more language stricken under, under three.
Jason, do you want to, like, I mean, if we've got things we wanted to go over, do you want us to wait till you're just done going through?
No, go ahead and just ask that there's.
Yes.
Pieces or areas you want to go.
So for those of, those who are in the policy committee who are doing this, um, Julia did a fantastic job, like, scallering this, the more I look at it, the more I look at it, the, the worse it gets. Um, I, I, I've got so at the very top, the second, uh, second bullet point. All right, um, one of my major issues, uh, right now is the fact that this ridiculous notion that has crept up of intersectional, intersexualism, where, where you're taking things that have nothing to pertain to what is actually being talked about and throwing it into a, a, a policy or a comment or a discussion that, because for some reason it seems to be culturally acceptable to throw it together, this is supposed to be a, a policy on anti racism, and yet we're talking about class, gender and, and a bunch of other stuff that have no purpose of this whatsoever. Um, so that's number, that's the point number two, so, so, so it talks about, uh, other culture, or sorry, the value of social or cultural factors such as race, class, gender on, on student success, race on an anti racism policy, that makes sense, but class and gender have nothing to do with it, with anti racism. Why do we have it in here, well, I mean, but I'm, I'm, I guess my the purpose of saying this on this portion is I would like to get rid of that from this policy. So, I mean, that's kind of where I'm at with this part, I mean, there, there are other things on this also, I mean, the point number four. Acknowledging racism is often compounded by other forms of discrimination, including but not limited to those protected classes referenced in policy one twelve, non discrimination. I, again, we're talking about intersectionality here, that's there is no hierarchy of, I have been discriminated worse against somebody else, I will never accept that policy, I will never accept that idea. And having something in here, just acknowledging racism is often compounded by something like that, it, it irks my cloth. I didn't look at it like that, but you're, but you're right.
Yeah, I did.
You're, you're right, and not taking away from any of the, I don't know what that is called, uh. I said the wrong word, but it, issue, subjects, whatever I say, you can't, you can't have an anti racism policy and then bring in another class, because then it takes away from being anti racist. I mean, if we want to have a anti sexism policy. Sure. Let's do that. Sure. We want to, if we want to have an anti whatever policy, you know, we can, we can discuss that, but having.
We have an anti discrimination policy.
Right, and that would fall in underneath that.
Things would do, would follow, fall under the anti discrimination, but you're right, and I didn't, I didn't look at that that way, but I don't, I don't disagree with you.
So what's the specific?
The, the question is, yeah, so, I mean, in my opinion, I would like to remove all of that stuff, as it stands right this second, before we go through our first reading, I mean, we, we spent an hour and a half trying to work on this policy, almost in, in policy committee. Um, I, I know it gets frustrating when we're, we're, we're having to, to deal with it in that, those terms, but I would rather get it right than not. So in, I would prefer to see it go back to the policy committee, work on it there, hammer it out there, but instead of trying to piecemeal it here, to try to get it taken.
I don't agree with that.
Yeah, I'll give it that.
Yeah, we've done that one before.
Good, good call. All right. So this just gets put back on the next policy agenda. So do we need to do an official vote for that one?
No, this is the first read.
Okay.
The program curriculum modifications policy, so we'll take that one back to the policy committee prior to bringing it back for. Yeah, we could do this first. Uh, the curriculum modifications, add language that these students may require an alternative assignment or activity. Uh, this is related to modifications that there's many times where we'd have modifications of the curriculum, sometimes it's by parent choice, sometimes because a differentiation level is needed or a learning style. Um, numerous reasons that could take place. Over that next level, I guess everybody can read there, the mona, um, recommend that we strike the eligible students, the modifications outlined below, our designated primary students as an alternative, dropping out of school, we felt that was no longer uh, relevant as we made many modifications and have different pathways and structures for students, not just those who are at risk of dropping out of school. We added the word. We added the words and, you know, enrolled in special programming, charter schools. And also that the modifications would apply to student programming. We give a lot of flexibility in our programming to students regardless of which school we're at, whether it's the Brooklyn Rivoli or the high school, SOFOs, options, CCA, so on. A decision made by the principal is designee, or his or her designee in response to a request other viewed by the district administrator upon request of a chance guardian. Should the parent guardian not be satisfied with the district administrator's review or request reviewed, maybe made in the school board. Just cleaning up that language and those requests.
The part we're just basically changing, instead of saying, hey, we're going directly to the school board, we're just adding in that district administrator to, to buffer, and then if somebody doesn't like it, they could still come to us.
Yes.
Follows that same process. Which knock on wood, we've always been able to resolve. We haven't had anything
Right.
in my decade here that had come about, the school board, that's evidently typically able to accommodate Um, let's see, we struck out seven-hour day that's called language. Or not relevant to the state's schedules. On the job training programs, would also like to strike most attendance goal of minimum of one period per day. Um, those guidelines have changed for the state level as well, and
Are they no longer required to, uh, go to school for that minimum one period per day if they're doing on the job track?
Yeah, because they can earn protected count.
Yeah.
Any other questions related to?
All right, this is just the first reading. Recommendations of the children's program, for standard.
All right, personnel, there's a number of items on the personnel sheet. Happy to review those. I want to thank Michelle Griffin, who served as the Westside School Council for a number of years. Elizabeth Getson, who was a sports staff member at Tibbetts, is a teaching assistant. And Kelly Isaacson is a Westside Special Education Teaching Assistant. And wish them well in their new endeavors. Um, we have a number of appointments. Mira Young is a high school reading interventionist. Kim Coates is a Jackson cook. Rebecca Reed is a Jackson Special Education Teaching Assistant. Samantha Myer is a Westside cook. Brittany Hell is a Westside cook. Uh, Ethan Lehmann is a Westside Special Education Teaching Assistant. Or Ellsworth is a Westside Special Education Teaching Assistant. Ina Hoar is a Special Education Teaching Assistant, and Charlotte Muir is a Special Education Teaching Assistant. Um, Mira Sanchez is a middle school real teaching assistant. Matt Hanley is a high school special education teaching assistant. Jackie Morrison is a teaching assistant at Options. Randy Stoll is a Tivett Special Education Teaching Assistant. And Ahard Nuss is a district office accountant. Brandon Senko is an athletic coach for football. Ian Tuck as girls tennis assistant. Joe Flash is a high school volleyball assistant. Jordan Reynolds and um, Kurt, Kurt Wickup is the co-head coaches for lacrosse. That was for their request. They wanted to do that together. And, um, we need one to be ahead of one of the others. They want to go together. Uh, Heather Galani is a high school softball head coach. John Harrell is a high school softball assistant coach, and Jason Hammond has middle school cross country assistant. Um, lots of, this is the time to go along and support staff hiring as we don't post those until that August time.
Nice to see another alum getting there too, Ian Tuck.
Yeah. We have, um, one professional staff opening that they're interviewing this week. That's the Westside. So we should be fully staffed.
And that's with that one condition, will we fully staff at that point? Sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to mess with anything.
I don't know if you'd seen, I saw in the county churches, obviously a much larger you know, school that should get to county, but they had eight hundred, I would feel, teaching openings starting the first week of school.
I think we have one more vacancy, Jason, that there's a better. I didn't see that one.
All right. All right.
Thanks, Doug. Good job. Put it out there in the world. It just came back.
We, we typically have someone that we're bringing onboard right under the wire for the new teacher orientation. Um, it's just since post Act Ten, the, the timeline has really shifted and changed. And with the job market the way it is, there's, there's it's very competitive. And I know that's a whole issue. All right. Any questions for Mr. Tebak?
I move to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, including a new employment contract conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Your second.
Second.
So the movement is second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, including the employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mr. Gannon.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
School gifts.
Hey, oh, I apologize. I grabbed my board notes here.
So here we have two gifts this evening, one from Mary Stensel. She donated, uh, a trumpet valued at a hundred dollars. And the Elkhorn Middle School, uh, PTO had donated one thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and nineteen cents for supplies purchased for many course states. We thank them. Looking for a motion.
I move to accept the generous audience as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So movement is second to accept the generous school gifts of Mary Stensel and the, uh, middle school PTO as presented. All those who appear to the eye.
I oppose.
Modification to the professional support staff.
And the personnel committee, uh, reviewed some uh, proposal related to support staff reimbursement, uh, program. And this is really, we've seen a lot of turnover. We just saw a lot of hires within that special education department. And our hope is that by including a professional development program where they can uh, similar to the teachers get reimbursed for their credits and moving forward in their career, that that might help retain some of those staff, also help grow our own. We have, um, greater turnover within the special education department as well in general. Um, so that's what this proposal is. And you'll see on the right side is what that professional, um, staff reimbursement program is. And previously, Kathy Bamaanski gave a lot of approvals with, when Kathy retired, that shift to go, so I wanted to reflect that. Uh, myself and Jody assist me, we have to do that review in here. So this will be a new proposal, but it would be similar to that professional staff. Any questions on that? I do believe that in our budgetary line item, we, we have a budget line item for advanced degree um, work and what we've found since our lane of movement has shifted from that master's degree being a focus, I feel that we probably fit within it. It varies from year to year depending on what was completed, but people need to increase that budget. All right. And then the coaching language update to the handbook. Again, all these statements are listed in the handbook. So with the addition of the cross. And with those coaches splitting the, the duties, that would be the, uh, it'd be thirty-five hundred dollars is what we would um, have that at powerlifting. Um, we have around a hundred participants. We need to add more coaches to that. We need to split them to two teams, safety at the kids and so forth. So, um, that was added there. And then you'll also see that assistance. So that'll have four coaches for powerlifting and it's not much.
We had a, we had a lot of people powerlifting last year, right? Like a lot.
Right around a hundred ninety-something. Had a national record holder, world record holder, national champion.
All right, questions? I was looking for a motion.
I move to approve the modifications to the professional and support staff that they hand books that presented.
Is there a second? So the movement is second to approve the modifications to the professional and support staff integral in the votes.
Mr. Andre.
Yep.
Mr. Gayhart. Mr. Gannon.
Yes.
This is Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Announcements?
All right, we have a number of announcements for this evening. A new teacher orientation. For now, the board president or designated will often attend that, but any board member, if you'd like to attend, you're welcome to do so. First date is August twenty-third. It lasts from eight to three, but the welcome is from eight o'clock and they come to me at nine thirty. So I think it's night this time. Yes. So usually, sir, you're more than welcome to come if you want to see the new teachers coming onboard and get a bill for what we introduce them to. Um, but you might have an interest in that if you're available. The all staff welcome back in years of service awards. Again, you're all invited to just let us know. We can post those, so we can post it appropriately. Um, but that will be August thirtieth. It starts at eight o'clock. Again, we did the years of service award and then kind of have a state of the, the school district.
Just so you know, August thirtieth is a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, not a Thursday.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Wednesday, it's thirtieth, all right? And then, um, let's see. Then we'll follow that up with the listening sessions for K five, six, eight, nine, twelve, and then the sports staff and office staff on one fifteen, two o'clock. And the, um, school budget ad hoc committee, put in your board notes, build created, uh, two drafts of the, the outline, um, of the you know, the purpose of the committee and so forth, as well as what was established previously that, you know, as far as the makeup of the committee, we're looking at two board representatives, I believe. Devin and Ed volunteered for that. Again, was that correct?
Make sure you are even, Jason.
Um, administrative representation, two or three members, teacher representation, we felt one from each level, support staff, uh, two members, parent representation, and community representation. So we'll push out, um, communication to both the community and parents and ask them to submit a, uh, letter of interest, so that, that can be, individuals can be selected for that. Um, advisory ad hoc committee, all those meetings are published as well. So even if someone's not on the ad hoc committee in an official post, they can serve the ad hoc committee. Um, and then along with that, there was also the um, second argument, which was an outline of what we felt the timeline for bringing initial recommendations to the board. Of course, that can always shift and change um, for that committee and the work, but we're looking at um, two to three meetings in September and a meeting, basically, we're thinking the opposite Mondays of the school board meetings. And I know when we did the ad hoc committee several years ago, it, it was, it just kept the continuity going, one of those every other week. Um, and going forward. So and that's all I have for the announcements. So we'll push that out and begin that process.
All right. Can we do a closed session to look at the motion?
I move to adjourn to the closed session. Submit to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen forty-eight five, statute one, where it will see F and G and Wisconsin State Statute one eighteen, one two five, to consider this best policies and procedures related to gender non-conforming students um, which it discussed in open session would harm the reputation of individuals discussed and require disclosure of confidential student information. And to defer with legal counsel regarding strategy with respect to potential litigation regarding the same. The school board will also discuss the performance of an administrator and will discuss salary adjustments for supervisors and administrators. Will reconvene in open session for action as appropriate and or to ensure.
Is there a second?
Okay.
So movement is second to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen forty-five one C, F and G, Wisconsin State Statute one one. Here and discuss policies in pursuit of which if discussed in open session would harm the reputation of individuals discussed and require disclosure of confidential student information. And to confer with legal counsel regarding strategy with respect to potential litigation regarding the same. The school board will also discuss the performance of an administrator and will consider salary adjustments for supervisors and administrators. The school board will reconvene in open session for action as appropriate and to ensure. Go cover this.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mr. Gannon.
Yes.
This is Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.